Evening. We'll call this meeting to order. Today is January 27, 2025. This is the regularly scheduled meeting of Rochester City Council. City Clerk, the roll call, please.
Salvia.
Here.
Bixson.
Here.
Hauser.
Here.
Jones.
Here.
King. Sage.
Here.
Trent.
Thank you. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Good evening. Welcome on this. It feels almost like a balmy night. You know, when it's 30 degrees after being minus minus, it feels balmy, although they are still ice skating out on the pond. The pond is still frozen. So I'm sure the police are keeping an eye on that. So we'll start out tonight with public comment. Do we have any public comment of anything that is not on our agenda tonight? Seeing none, we will move on to our scheduled presentations. The first presentation is a quarterly financial report.
Good evening, Council. Since we spent a lot of time on Saturday discussing the finances and reviewing it, I just have a couple things to note on it, and that is the amendment list, which is right here. That is the request for tonight. And that is, we're looking for five amendments. First one is, this is for the GRAM, the actual loan payment. Although, of course, the project and everything was approved, we needed to add a GL number for it and then the amounts to go into that. The second is state revenue, personal property changes. So that one is going to be an annual change that we'll get for current year and going forward, an additional sharing back for personal property reimbursement back from the state. We have various for the lines because it is across all departments that have any part-time employees. That is the changes that will be at 221 this next month for the Earn Sick Time Act. We have a trip to the past trash contract. And then we have the removal of a budgeted and not going to be filled position for a full-time position. So that is the salary portion of that. So that's the request on the amendments tonight. If there's nothing else to note in the report itself, if there's any questions that anyone has on anything, I can take those now. Otherwise...
Councilor Jones, you have the floor.
Thank you. You've already answered some of these, but maybe we went back and forth this afternoon.
Yeah.
But just if you could explain, since we did it in email, the GRAM and that portion, because you said you were moving, just in a little explanation on that.
Yes. So in the budget, so we have the project and they have the loan payments that they're making on it. There has not yet been an amendment to actually put money into that GL line for the expense on the loan. So it's more of just housekeeping to clear it up, and that's looking to add to the expense. So it's a positive here because we're going to add to this expense line so we can have the loan payments matched for this and the future years until it's up in 30.
So it's just sort of an in and out? It's a balance? Like you're going to put in now money?
There's, yes, yeah. And then the payments are coming out to then go towards, to G Financial.
Okay. And then you gave me just a little more information about the Earn Sick Time Act. So if you just want to, you know, it's Michigan-driven and just exactly what that is.
Sure. So we currently have the Paid Medical Leave Act in Michigan. Above certain thresholds, you have to give a sick time for part-time employees. With the changes for the Earn Sick Time Act, the conversions going from 1 to 35 hours to 1 to 30 hours, so every 30 hours worked is one hour of sick time. And then it also changes how the rollovers work. In the Paid Medical Leave, there were no rollovers. It just, you used it during the year, and if you didn't use it, it went away. There's now rollovers in the act that will carry forward each year. And so the kind of changes from how we were doing it to what the changes in the act are now. So the prior 1 to 35 to 1 to 30, the expanded range of employees it applies to, because it's everyone now. It doesn't matter if you work 10 hours a year. After three years, you will get one hour of sick time. The Paid Medical Leave had a different floor on it. I don't remember off the top of my head the floor. If it was like 1,200 hours a year, there was a certain amount you had to hit before you got any. So now it's all. And so with those changes, that's taking the prior rolling 12 months, looking at all of the part-time employees. And it doesn't apply to the full-time because the full-time, all of them are set at eight hours a month. So it's already above the minimum amount. If it was below the minimum, that'd have to be changed as well, but it's not. So they do not count. And then on the part-time side, looking at how many hours all of them work, dividing it out by 30, times their wage by the one hour for each one of those 30, and that's going to be the amount for the, starting February 21st through the end of the fiscal year. And then going forward, it'll be about 20, a little over 20,000 that we'll add each year going forward. There are a lot of amendments to this that are, most of it's focused on the tipped wages. I haven't seen the current committee reports yet, but there are a lot of proposed changes. We're, this is the law right now. So we are moving forward as if it is what it is. And I don't know that many of the amendments, I've read a couple of them, had anything to do with this part of it. It was mostly focused on the tipped wages for servers.
Okay. Which we have none of those.
Well, right. That's, I'm like, well, this applied to us. They could change that. It doesn't apply to us anyway, so.
And then the 150,000, you just stated that will come every year? That's kind of a new addition to our...
Yes, yeah. That's been, kind of the way they calculate that is, in 2013, they made a change to personal property taxes. And they started, that was Governor Snyder at the time, to make it more competitive, was removing personal property tax for manufacturing. And they wanted to start phasing that out. Even small businesses, now you're exempt up to 180,000 on personal property. So it's really just capturing a small range. What they did is, when they started phasing that in, the amount that it was hurting all the municipalities, that's, they were making them whole with it. So if you were here, I will visualize here, if you were here and now the changes brought you to here, they were funding that gap. No inflation adjustments. You were just getting dollar for dollar for all the years, but they were at least making it whole.
Yeah.
So now we're, well, and the way they kind of funded that is they had no idea what it was going to actually cost. So they kind of threw a number, best guess, and then they added an inflation factor to that. So what's happened now, almost 12 years later, is the amount in the pool is enough to cover all the gaps for all the municipalities in the state. So everybody's made backhold to the non-adjusted 2013 number, and there's a balance left. That balance gets distributed to all of the other municipalities based on what their share is. So this 150, 150 to 175, is the extra amount that's left over in statute after all the municipalities have been made whole. So all of them are going to receive a portion proportionate to what the reimbursement is out of that balance. So this, until they change the law, it's not an appropriations item that they can get rid of until there's a statute change, which we would then address if that happened. This would continue, just the way the calculation is, it won't go away. So we want to make the adjustments because it's going to stay here. And we just hit a point now where, rolling forward after all those years with the adjustments they're making and having it be not adjusted for inflation on the reimbursements, there ends up with this extra funding left.
Wonderful. That's wonderful. That's great.
We'll take it.
Yeah, absolutely.
Intend the state wants to give something.
Yeah. Positive cash flow. That was, that was all my questions, which almost covered all of those. So thank you.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you. Treasurer Maggio, could you go to the bonding page?
Yeah. It has just the summary on it.
The summary, the summary of all of our bonds, our debt.
Is here.
Yep. So I wanted to make a couple comments about the city's current debt structure. Number one, in looking at all of the debt that we have, we have incredibly low, historically low, you know, debt that is 1 and 1/2, 2 and 1/2, two very, very low debt. If you look at, you know, long-term history of municipal bonds and debt for municipalities, you know, a 4 and 1/2 to 5% is very common. I mean, it has been certainly much higher than that. So number one, very low interest rates on the current debt that we have. I also want to make a couple comments on this topic since we had some public comment recently that, in my opinion, was at minimum not complete, perhaps incorrect. So I just kind of want to educate, have some additional education and discussion around bonding and really why would the city bond? I mean, this is our current list of debt, if you will. And there are many factors that a small municipality like Rochester uses. And I think both this council and previous councils have been very judicious and fiscally responsible about looking at all of those factors. Certainly, the cost to issue bonds is a factor, but it would be, I'll say, inappropriate to compare us, a less than $20 million revenue city with a almost $200 million city. We have to use different tools. We have to use different strategies. We have to be, quite honestly, we have to be even smarter because we have to make our dollars go further. Cash flow funding was discussed. You know, why can't we just cash flow fund everything? Cash flow funding would be great and probably more possible if we had a close to $200 million revenue. I was happy to hear on Saturday that because of good planning and maybe some help from Oakland County where we've pushed out a major project that we could be able to fund a $3 million water project that a year or two ago we thought we were going to have to be bonding for. So, you know, that's an example of planning, pulling all the levers, looking at everything. And then really, the bottom line to me, in someone that works with finance every day, is if it costs the city 4%, bond council said they hoped it could be a little less, but let's plan on 4%. And if we are making, let's say, more than 4% in our general fund dollars, we certainly have current investments that are making more than that. Some are a little less. And historically, I know we have made more than 4%. So let's say we're making 5. If we're making 5, that 1% is what bond council called arbitrage. So that means more money coming to the city. It's positive. It's also, we all learned from bond council, that that arbitrage is something that big municipalities can't take advantage of. So again, that's a, that's a strength for Rochester. So Treasurer, any additional comments in general that you would have regarding bonding as a city and past practices?
I think you summed it up very well. The only thing I maybe add on for consideration is a little bit on the details on the whys and the planning. So the cash funding is always great, but the issue becomes, who's going to use the asset and why is the money there? So if you start doing a lot of cash funding and racking up the savings account in the bank, then the question becomes, are you overtaxing? Because you're going to keep growing and keep growing and keep growing. It's, well, what are you using it for? Well, we want to cash fund stuff. What stuff? You know, and you want to start planning and have answers to why you're putting money into the bank. And then what is nice about the, let's say, like the bonding side for some of the projects, it matches who's getting the benefits to it. So when you pay your tax bill each year, you're paying your tax bill, and some of that is going towards the amenities that that bond is paying for, whether it's skate park or whether it's, pick any of the other, the roads. When you move, you no longer are paying into that anymore because you're not paying that tax bill anywhere because you moved to another community and you moved out of the area. So you don't have to pay now for the use of those assets for what they were built for when you did the bonding. So there's definitely a perfect balance in those things. For a smaller municipality like Rochester, things are expensive. Being able to cash fund multimillion-dollar projects is not easy. That is for sure. It takes a lot of diligence and planning. And even to be able to pay for some of those large projects in even water and sewer funds, like we were talking about on Saturday with the North Main, being able to cash fund that project because we're looking out and we're trying to manage rates and we're managing projects and we're not having, you look at all the capital expenses, we're right, we're right there. So sometimes when you get to the larger amounts, that's, that's the only option you have is to finance.
Thank you. Any other questions from council? Do we have a motion to accept the budget amendments?
So moved.
Motion by Mayor Protem Bixson.
Support.
Support by Counselor Sage. City Clerk?
Salvia.
Yes.
Bixson.
Yes.
Hauser.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
King.
Yes.
Sage.
Yes.
Thank you. Motion passes. Budget amendments will be made. I'm sure the next budget workshop or budget meeting, we will see those.
Absolutely. Thank you, Council.
Thank you. Moving on to the consent agenda, we have three items. We have a consideration to approve the Detroit congenital heart walk. We have consideration of the minutes of the January 13, 2025 meeting. And we have receipt of the check register. Council?
So moved.
Motion by Mayor, Mayor Protem Bixson.
Support.
Support by Counselor Hauser. City Clerk?
Salvia.
Yes.
Bixson.
Yes.
Hauser.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
King.
Yes.
Sage.
Yes.
Thank you. The consent agenda passes. We have no old business. We have no table at items. We have no public hearings. We have no legislative deliberation. We have reports in regular business, though. First off, we are going to accept a resignation letter from Planning Commissioner Eric Lord. So I would first off just like to thank Eric for his service to the city, to the planning commissioners. That's a very important position. He brought his technical expertise and knowledge to that board, and we thank him. We appreciate his service. Counselor Hauser, it seems like you want to say something from working with him.
I do. I've worked with Eric for maybe four or five years now, and I can tell you, he's the consummate professional, and he really, truly knew his stuff. And he had an incredible way to present that information in a manner that was easy to understand and really gave some deep consideration. He was always prepared. So it's a big loss to the planning commission. I can't overstate that enough. So whoever that fills that spot has got a really tough task because Eric was, you know, first class in that job.
Absolutely, absolutely. So on that, that is a mayoral appointment. City Clerk, if you could clarify our timeline on how we post that?
Okay. So we'll have a motion this evening to receive his resignation. And if directed by council, then we'll advertise it on the website, collect applications for a 30-day period, and present those to council as I have other boards and commissions' applications recently.
Thank you. And I, because of Eric's technical experience, in my mind, I was thinking we need someone with at least some technical experience. But city attorney, it sounds like there's also some language that is in our ordinances. Yes?
Yes, Madam Mayor. Actually, I thought there was as well. There's, I did take a look at the membership language for Planning Commission. It must be a different board that has the specific language. But this states that, just as a refresher, Planning Commission shall consist of nine members, seven of which, of whom shall be representative insofar as possible of different professions and occupations and appointed by the mayor, subject to the approval of city council. Then the other two are ex-officios, namely the mayor and then a city council member. So I thought there was actually language in there about, you know, architectural, things that the Planning Commission would benefit from. Engineers are, but I guess it must be in a different, a different section.
Okay. Thank you for clarifying that. So I guess at this point in time, I'm looking for a council motion and direction to the city clerk.
I will make a motion to accept the resignation of Eric Lord and direction to the city clerk to post a vacancy up on the city website and any other resource that the city has to make that spot available.
Okay. Motion by Counselor Hauser.
Support.
Support by Counselor Jones. Any other discussion on that motion? City Clerk?
Salvia.
Yes.
Bixson.
Yes.
Hauser.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
King.
Yes.
Sage.
Yes.
Thank you. The motion passes. City Clerk, you're up. This is a lot from your, from your desk, so to speak, tonight. We're going to talk about the 2025 regular election cycle. It's happening.
Yes, it is. And another election with something more that needs to be communicated to council. So I wanted to put this out there as early as I could this year so that everyone from council to the community and potential other candidates are all on the same page with regard to this November's election. So if you don't mind, I'll just read through the memo that I prepared for you. So this year's 2025 election is going to have the full-term city council race on it, as it always does. By full term, we obviously mean that the top four or top three vote-getters will get the four-year term. The fourth one would get a two-year term. So that, that remains the same. But in addition to that, we will have a second race on the ballot to fill the unexpired partial term of Councilmember Gould's resignation. So with that, has a couple of different challenges that council and candidates need to be aware of. So I will go through the memo here. One, candidates may circulate and file the petitions for either or both races. If you, if a candidate files for both races, then they must submit in writing with the city clerk a withdrawal notice by the withdrawal deadline of 4:00 p.m. Friday, April 25, 2025. That's three days late past the filing deadline of April 22, 2025 at 4:00 p.m. You don't have to, if you choose to file for both races, that doesn't mean you have to file for both of them at the same time. You could file for one, then you could file again later, and then make your withdrawal as long as you hit the deadlines. Number two, the partial term race has a lower number of candidates that would trigger an August primary. The regular term race would still require nine candidates, and that's what we are used to here in Rochester. But for the first time, we'll have this other partial term race. So the regular, or the full term would require nine candidates, and the partial term would only require three to be qualified. So, and either one of them would be the only thing on that primary. So if you have eight or less on the regular one and you get three or more on the partial, that will be the only race on the ballot. And any proposals, of course, that council would be, would have. Also, an elect cannot sign more nominating petitions than there are persons to be elected to the office. For the full-term race, that's four. For the partial-term race, that's one. That's important for you guys because I do know sometimes you'll circulate your petitions among yourselves. And if you choose to sign yours for the two-year term, then you shouldn't be signing any others because then your other signatures would not count. Mayor Protem Bixson asked if the signatures on both sets of petitions can be the same, and they can be the same for, so you can circulate them, go in your neighborhood, have the electors sign both at the same time. Let's see. My suggestions, and these are just suggestions, to try to avoid that extra overlap on council candidates' things, is try not to circulate petitions at the same meeting or event as another candidate is. Submit more signatures than you needed to allow a cushion for error. So the petition sheets that I give you, I give you four. They each have 12 spaces, so that's up to 48. That's 23 more than you need, so that, I think that would be a good enough cushion. And the other is to submit your petitions early, before the April 22 deadline, because then it gives me time. I go through them as soon as I get them. But then I will go through them if there's any errors or anything that needs to be cured. As long as it's before the 4:00 p.m. on the April 22, you have the ability to fix that. After that, you do not. So there's that. And then placed before the five council people that are up for this year, I did put petition, two sets of petition packets for each. You will see that I filled in your top on your petitions for all four sheets, and you'll note that I did put the partial term and the full term. So make sure when you're circulating the petitions, you're circulating for which one that you wanted. And I think, oh, also in your packet, so we have the cover memo that is updated with all of this new information. You also have your affidavit of identity. And in addition, you have a withdrawal notice. The state does not have a standard form for that. So rather than have everyone asking, what does it have to include? But I went ahead and did a form that is easy enough that you can sign. If you're on your way to my office and it's 3:45 on that deadline and you forget the affidavit or the withdrawal notice, I have more in the office. Your petition papers are really what you need. So I think that's all. I'm open for questions. And as you come up with questions and new candidates, for sure, please communicate with me. Now, this is, this is a lot to take in. It's not your life, it's mine. So please be sure to ask anything that, and don't assume that you, don't assume that you know because then that could have adverse effects on your being on the ballot. All right? Thank you.
Thank you. That was a very nice, complete report. I will take council questions or comments, and then I will take public comment on this. Counselor Hauser.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, past couple elections, the general elections, there's been early voting. Will early voting be applicable to this particular election?
So I will come to council with that probably in March. The law for the early voting is that early voting is required for federal and state elections, the nine consecutive days for eight hours each day. For local elections, it's not required at all. You can choose to have zero up to 29 days of early voting. You can choose to have different hours. You can choose to have different days, eliminate the weekends. I will encourage you to keep it the same. You don't want to start that voter behavior of, when do I go? But that will be up to you because there is a cost. It costs about $600 a day for the early, for the workers for the early voting. So.
And, I'm sorry, I don't mean to be, pile on you here. So let's say that there's a primary, okay? And that the primary would be in August, historically correct. Is there early voting for the primary, too?
Again, that would be up to city council. So I think once we know whether that's going to happen, I bring that to you at the first meeting in May and say, okay, we know we're having this. What's council's pleasure as far as early voting? What days? What hours? What do you want to have?
Okay. Thank you for those answers. I appreciate it.
Any public comment on this topic? Welcome, Pat.
817 West Fourth Street. So to understand this correctly right now, we have the potential of only two people retaining their seats and not having to run for this next election?
Correct.
Okay. And the next thing is, is when, how late can we pull a petition?
You can pull the petition up until right before the filing deadline as long as you have enough time to gather your signatures. They're ready now and available at the clerk's office if you want to pick them up. They've already, we've already had two individuals pick them up. So they're ready now. But the filing deadline is April 22 at 4:00 p.m. So you can pick them up the day before if you think you can go around your neighbor. That's, that's up to you. That's, that's how.
The only other question I have is, is it possible or can we, as, as, let's say, the public residents at large, find out who's pulling petitions?
Yes. It's public information, absolutely.
We won't do a lot with that. And somebody left glasses here. There's glass case and glasses, just so you know. It's right there.
Thank you. Any other public comments? All right. Thank you. We don't need any. We don't need any motions on that.
No, we do not. Thank you.
Thank you for that report. All right. Moving on to item C, which is consideration to accept a building resilient infrastructure and communities, otherwise known as a BRIC grant. So it looks like we have Fire Chief Ceslik. I'm sure we might also hear from Treasurer Maggio on this. You know, I always love to hear about grants and other people's money coming to the city of Rochester.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The city of Rochester applied for a BRICs grant, just as you described it. And so with that grant, we requested funding to do engineering studies to help reduce flooding throughout the city in several selected areas and other areas that might be similar to it. We were kind of left it open. We did get awarded of consideration if we want to accept a grant. I'm going to round it off to like $140,000. It's slightly less than that. The city will get about $94,000 or $95,000 from the federal government, and then the remaining portion would be funded by the city. We have the option to go ahead and accept a grant or turn it down. If we decide to accept a grant, the money would be used for engineering. We do have a little bit of a timing that we want to consider from council is if we accept a grant and we want to now move forward for the grant to get the funding, we have to have a letter of intent. In other words, a letter that we're going to move forward with the next grant has to be turned into the state of Michigan by February the 3rd. And so we do have the application for that. It doesn't mean we have to have the grant ready, but we have to at least file to the state that we intend to put together another grant to look for the funding for the activities. So it's, it's council's pleasure as to whether we want to accept a grant or not accept a grant, and whether or not you'd like for me to, and the rest of the city administration to go ahead and file the letter of intent.
Okay. Thank you. And so Treasurer Maggio, so the, in our packet, it has list 31,282. That is the non-federal share. So that, my understanding is that is a 2020, be a 2025 budget additional request. And we have used AEW to begin doing some of the preliminary engineering work on this.
That would be correct, yes. It'd be for this fiscal year. There is no line item for that when we have grants, because you never know if we're going to get awarded them or not and what the shares are. So in this case, this would be a new ask in this year's budget that we just amended, double amend.
Right. Okay. So, so if we want the roughly $94,000 in outside money, it could potentially cost the city up to $31,000, 2025 budget year.
Correct.
And the estimated total cost of this project, I mean, I know we haven't done the engineering, but I know this is a pretty big problem.
So I think we were, initial estimates were around $1.5 million. City manager? Around $1.5 million would be the next step that we would be looking for.
Counsel, motions or questions? Counselor Jones.
Just to clarify, this has to be done, correct? I mean, this is an issue we have with flooding, so.
Are you talking about the, the.
Well, I know the first part is just getting engineering in there and figure out what, but the 1.5, eventually the one.
So, so we ask our engineers, AEW, to take a look at a couple of the areas that we had initial priorities at. That was on the Second Street and Third Street intersection, the riverbank behind the, the library, and the large curve in Letica Road seem to be the areas that are, are most flooding. We do recognize that on North Main Street, we have quite an issue there in the alleyway, but we felt that would get taken care of from our initial conversations when Rochester Road got, or Main Street got reconstructed. So we're, we're guessing that someplace around that 1.3 to 1.5 million potential would be the repair.
I mean, my thoughts are to move forward with the grant and the investment of the 31,202 from Rochester.
So we say a motion by Counselor Jones?
Yeah, if there's no other, yes.
Okay.
I would like to make a motion to move forward with the grant, and the portion from Rochester, I believe, is 31,202. And that would be our commitment, our share towards a grant.
Motion by Jones?
Support.
Support by Sage. Any other discussion? City clerk.
Sylvia.
Yes.
Bixson.
Yes.
Hauser.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
King.
Yes.
Sage.
Yes.
Thank you. Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Next, moving on to some reports from various boards and commissions. There was one that was not on the agenda that we would like to add the OPC met earlier this, still this month, it's still January. So Mayor Proton Bixson will be reporting out on that. But to begin with, I will take the Downtown Development Authority. So the meeting was held January 15th. At the start of the meeting, we had a bit of an update on the GRAM. We had the architect there, Steve Auger, as well as Sean Rewald. By the end of the month, they should have some numbers. By the end of February, they will have three to four bids on everything. So as we're going through the budgeting process with the DDA, we should have some, some really firm numbers here by the end of February. Then the Chamber of Commerce, Bob DiTomaso, gave an update. Notable events coming up is the February 28th Community Outlook event. That's the event at Oakland University. The theme, in case anybody wants to know, of the little video skits, is the 50 Years of Saturday Night Live. So I've been asked to pick which character I would like to be, so I don't know if anybody has any thoughts on that.
I think I might.
We can vote on that one after. Historical Commission gave an update on Founder's Day. Paul Haig talked about the principal shopping district and really stated it has been such a strong Christmas shopping season in downtown. He talked a little bit about catching fireflies, that it wasn't even all the way through the season and they were up 40%. And they felt it was like, just because they were on Main Street, just moving from off Main to Main, sales up 40%, which is incredible. On February 4th, we will have the Main Street Oakland County accreditation. The DDA meeting schedule was approved for the year. The DDA Goals and Objectives meeting will be held February 12th. Christie, in her Executive Director's Report, talked a lot about Lions Pride in downtown Rochester. I even saw today that Heather Tocco of The Home Bakery posted a really sweet video just thanking everyone, including the DDA, for, for everything. She was so sweet. We're just all still so sad that the Lions aren't in the hunt. I, I'm not over it, at least, at least in our whole house, we're not. The promotions were great. Lots of different businesses got in on it. And we did ask for an economic impact report of that. What was the economic impact of that, just lightning in a bottle event? And I think that was the highlight. City manager, anything I missed?
Foodie February, they started.
Foodie February starts.
First of February. Bring your receipts.
Yeah.
If you buy something or you eat at a restaurant, you can bring your receipts in, you get into a raffle to go in and get certificate for downtown. And then the Globe Fest was, they were just reporting that we were about to have it last weekend with ice sculptures, et cetera. So, two weeks ago, so when we had that.
That's true. And I did have, I did have a question. I know the lights, we extended the Big Bright Light Show through February 9th for the Super Bowl. Are we still sure that we want to do that? I know that's kind of a hard question, but.
Yeah, I've been talking to Christie, talking to the businesses, it's mattering every night still.
It is.
So.
Okay.
So they want to keep them on. They asked to keep them on, not just on the weekends, but since they're on every night. If you come down here, you still see people wandering around normally, which they wouldn't be doing right now. So I think they're going to keep them on. It's a minimal cost, too.
Okay. If it's helping, then great. I just wasn't sure if it was making people like, ah, those lights, why are they still on? So if it's helping, that's great. All right. Moving on to the Historical Commission. Counselor Sage.
Thank you, Mayor. A couple of things. The, in this place, the historical coloring books that we provide to the second graders in the Rochester Community School system will be delivered by mid-February. We mentioned, or was mentioned before, Founder's Day is on Sunday, March 23rd. It will be at the Calf Barn at the Rochester Hills Museum at Van Hoesen Farm. And it's going to feature a presentation from Carol Egbo. She's the Oakland County historian, and she's going to give us a presentation on the indigenous people of Oakland County and their impact on the development of the greater Rochester area. There is an Eventbrite link that we're going to ask you to click on. It's free, but they just want to do it for planning purposes. I think we've posted it on the website. Okay, good. On the city website. We are sad to report that the Greater Rochester Heritage Days celebration is going to take a hiatus this year. We need to revision that event, and we need to engage more community stakeholders in its success. It's been, it's just fallen on us and the Historical Commission, and it's unfair. So we're going to take a break, but we're going to come back strong in 2026 to coincide with the America 250 Celebration. And we actually put in a budget amendment this year, should come, I think it came to, I think we got it to City Hall.
I see.
Where we're going to take out the funding that we normally allocate to Heritage Days, put it towards America 250, so, because that'll still fall within the fiscal year, I think. Yes. And then lastly, the Detroit United Railway Book has gained traction again, which is great. So we, we would like to try and figure out a way to give copies to other municipalities, neighboring municipalities, and a way to engage them on ways their residents can actually purchase the book. We also thought, and we didn't even know, the State of Michigan Library, they don't have a copy. We need to send one to them and provide the information on how to purchase the book.
Excellent. Any questions?
A quick comment. I just, Carol Egbo, who's the guest speaker, is a former high school teacher of history at Waterford Mountain High School.
There you go.
Ah, one of your colleagues. Excellent.
She will do a great job.
Thank you. And, and thank you for, you know, everyone's kind of, I'll say, tough decision to take a hiatus from Heritage Days. And then I just think it's going to be so exciting to relaunch it with America 250. So I think that's going to be great. It's a good, good decision. All right. Counselor Sage, you're up again with the Paint Creek Trailways. You've been busy.
Very good. We did have the officer elections. Happy to report that they voted me in as chair again for the year, so.
Thank you.
We also revised some of the ad hoc committee assignments, because we had new people on, on the commission. We've also taken a different approach to the, our annual goals. We just had, we listed everything the trail did as a goal. And that's just, that doesn't really reflect what, what goal setting is all about. So we're going to revise that and prioritize some limited number of goals, and then just simply redefine or clarify that some are just duties and responsibilities of the trail manager. So, and we'll, we'll go from there. So I'll report out on that.
Excellent. Thank you. Any questions? Nope. Okay. Excellent. So then let's go to Mayor Proton Bixson for the OPC.
Yes. So I attended my first meeting in a while at the OPC. They did have a election of board of directors, and they elected the same board with David Walker, Rochester Hills City Council, as the chair. And then, of course, we had to have a controversial issue on the first meeting. So we raised the fee for non-residents. So we, there are 1,000 people who do not live in Rochester, Rochester Hills, or Oakland Township, who can pay a fee. The fee hasn't been raised in 22 years. Okay? So we raised it from a single person from $175 to $225, and we, we had so much to spend, don't quote me on these numbers. And we raised the, a couple from $200 to $270. Still, Lifetime Fitness is $250 for the year. This is $250 for a couple for, for the, for the year. Lifetime Fitness is $250 a month.
A month.
So this is a fantastic deal. To be honest with you, there were some people, not me, who wanted it a lot higher, but we thought kind of tail this in. Now, there were some people who felt like there was going to be a hardship, but that was what we decided to do. So that was, so we've raised it, but there are 1,000 non-residents who are, are there.
Impacted.
And there were some people who felt like they should pay a lot more, and that they're getting too good of a deal. But, so this was a way to kind of start the process, and then I think then we might have some yearly raises or look at it yearly as opposed to that. So that's all I have.
As opposed to 22 years.
Counselor Hauser?
One question. Mr. Mayor, Mayor Proton, I don't mean to put you on the spot, but let's say there is someone who's impacted financially by this adjustment. Is there any type of mechanism or program that OPC has to maybe help someone out if they need to, to bridge that gap, or is it just kind of, they're on their own?
Mayor, maybe the mayor can help me with that. I, I don't know that there's a program.
Okay.
And, and, yeah, you know, we've gotten, a person was there, and we've gotten some letters, and it's, you know, it's, it's sad.
No, no, I, I just wasn't sure. Okay. Yep. A hardship fund or something. Okay. Thank you.
Yeah. Counselor.
I was just curious. Do you know 1,000, I mean, it sounds like a lot, but do you know how much of the overall membership that is by chance?
Yeah, there's, I think there's a total of like 13,000 members. So it's 1,000. So it's, yeah. And I, I would say it's mostly Shelby, you know, people who live fairly close, but, you know, in, in theory, they do not pay taxes.
Right.
It goes into the OPC. So, you know, you can look at that a lot of different ways.
And now they're gone there?
No. It's a hard thing.
Yeah. It, it is hard, and, but, but the right thing to do. I mean, it's, it's unfortunate it hasn't been adjusted over time, but, because change isn't good for anyone, so. Yep. Thank you. Thank you for that, that report. All right. One other item that I wanted to make sure that.
One more to report.
Another.
Ra-Ra.
Ra-Ra.
It's on the agenda.
Ra-Ra, right here. And it says Counselor King. You're up.
Okay. Thank you. So we had an update on annual 2024 performance, which I'm pleased to say revenues were up $300,000 over 2023. We had approximately 1,000 more participants just in Ra-Ra events. Now, there's a lot of things that Ra-Ra does that doesn't necessarily require registrations when they sponsor, like HOA events, some of the community stuff. There was a lighting event at Innovation Hills. And so they don't always get everybody's attendance for those things, but just for the actual programming, an incredible increase there. And, and I don't know the number of total participants off the top of my head, so, but I know 1,000 more this year. And then, so up 300,000 of revenue to 2.843 million in 2024. 2025, we're projecting 3.39 million, so another increase there. Fund balance is really strong, over $1 million in the fund balance versus the target, I think the policy is 582,000. So in very good condition. Obviously, the sale of the additional building really helped to stabilize things, be able to reinvest in that building and the roof and everything. So the, the only large capital cost, there is the entryway, which I think Planning Commission approved. The, our, the, the company responsible, the contractor, hasn't come through yet and done it, so that will hopefully get done this spring. If not, they might have to go find somebody new to do the work. But nothing major on the books for this year. As we talked about during the budget meeting, there is a discussion around doing a millage, because the contract with Rochester Hills is expiring, and they'll have to go out and do a millage. So I know they approached the city potentially about Rochester doing one as well, but there's no, as we're looking at kind of the funding needs, there's no kind of request of whether we're going to increase, decrease, keep it stable yet, and that's still being worked out. So I think more to come there. They are working on doing a master plan. That'll take some time, but it'll help in the future with any sort of grants that are needed, something that's required for those purposes. And then there are some new spaces. There's a game lounge, which has some stuff that'll be great for, I think, like teenagers, pre-teens. They're working on programming for that space now, and also rentals of it. There's going to be a computer lab with esports gaming center. So really expanding kind of the offering for different age groups as well. There's new tenant Coleman Golf with a golf simulator in there. She does lessons, I think, out at Twin Lakes when the weather's nice, and at least in the winter, she's going to be inside there. And then there is a SCAMP, which is the school, the summer camp. So a summer camp bowling fundraiser on Saturday, February 8th, from 1:30 to 4:00 at North Hill Lanes. $25 a person, pizza pop prizes included. So come out with your families, friends. I will be there with my family and some neighbors, and looking forward to it.
Awesome. Great report. Thank you. Yep. Any questions? Counselor Jones?
Just, I guess, a comment, two comments. I've done that SCAMP event at the, and it's really heartwarming and worth anybody going. It's a, it's a great, great event. And I just wanted to say that they had reached out to me about, and I talked to Nancy, or the mayor, about this, about the Lions Park, and they want to have a series of five concerts there on Friday nights with bands. And they were looking for some help from the city. Or they have had a donor of $500 already, but they are looking for a lot more, because they said the bands are at least $500 to play. So I just wanted out there, if anyone wants to donate to that cause, and see if there's any way we can help them out, so they can have a series. Super excited about it being used.
It'd be a great activation.
Yeah. And it'll be done early enough in the evening that a rock band's not playing at midnight. So it's going to be early concerts, so. That's it. That's it.
All right, excellent. Last call for public comment.
Yada, yada, yada. Okay. I don't know if I should be in touch with Pat McKay or with Carol. I was the recipient. My husband purchased for me a long, long time ago, the entire Indian basket collection from the Native American that traveled through the area of Van Huesen Farms way back. And I was gifted that entire collection through Alice Sorrell, who was Van Huesen Sarah's companion and also an employee. And she had been given those baskets upon the death of Van Huesen and cared for them. So I cared for them for many, many years, the entire lot of them. And many of them are still seen in the archival photographs from way back. But all of them were woven by one Native American, and they traded, coming from the north, from their hunting grounds, they traded on the trails when they came through here, because we do have a trail, like, I don't know if people know, the Indigenous natives used right through this area. And they traded with Van Huesen Farms on their way to their summer grounds, and their summer grounds were like St. Clair. Okay? So should I be in touch? I did gift the baskets quite a while ago, and I did, Pat McKay took possession of them from me as a donation. I gave him all of them. But I have information, I have stories, and I know that there are archival photographs, and this is part of our history right here that is authenticated and documented that I don't know if she'd know about. So I don't know who to get in touch with, whether it would be Pat or whether it would be Carol.
I'd say both, so...
Start with Pat, maybe?
Yeah.
Okay.
And he'll be able to put you in touch with Carol.
Okay. Okay, because they're there, they're still in storage, but it's quite a, quite a history and one person doing all the weaving. And you can see the weaving is very precise all the way down the lines, but, cool. Okay, thank you.
Wow. Thanks, Pat. That's, that's pretty interesting. I'd like to see those. I've never seen those. Any other public comment? I see a commissioner has stopped by tonight.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, council members. Mike Spiz from Old County Board of Commissioners. You guys move efficiently. I know I was a little late, but you guys are going through that agenda pretty dang quick. I would like to touch base with somebody after. I understand we have a washout, or actually two washout issues on the Clinton River Trail. So I'd be interested in who I might be able to talk with here, Nick, okay? So that, see if I can help. No promises, but it was brought to my attention by our Oakland County Parks and Rec Department.
Appreciate that.
Trying to find ways to assist and get both of those fixed. So I'll touch base with Nick afterwards. Thank you.
Thank you. Good for coming.
Can I ask a question to the, we, we hear from other of the communities that the Oakland County Sheriff has raised prices significantly.
That is 100% correct.
33%.
Why?
33% over three years.
Why was that?
Um, it depends on who you talk with. You talk...
How about you?
Yeah, exactly. Well, I voted against it, for one. So if you talk to those that voted for it, it was because they believed they were undercharging for the last decade, right? So they raised it by roughly 15% the first year, and then roughly 9% each year after that, so year over year, almost hits 35%. In my personal opinion, everybody in Oakland County pays taxes, so why are we charging for administrative costs? Because it's all included in all the SGNA that goes through the entire county. So that's where the debate is. That's what the sheriff and Brooks Patterson in the past all agreed on, is not to charge that additional 8%-ish roughly for SGNA costs, but the current administration and the current Board of Commissioner leadership didn't agree with that. So they increased the cost.
So I could tell you a direct impact of that. So the Trailway Commission doesn't have a lot of money, and I don't think we're going to use the horses anymore. Just can't afford it.
I'm sorry to hear that. It's unfortunate, but you're not the only community that's looking to make adjustments into their staffing. I expect all the 12 communities to make adjustments, and the biggest effect is going to be the School of Resource Officers. That's the really big impact that I'm really upset and frustrated to see, because it's going to impact them, and there was a lot of partnerships with the schools and the municipalities. Now, a lot of those municipalities are stepping back, saying, schools, this is up to you to pay for this, which is not the right direction, in my opinion, to go. We need more SRO officers, not less.
Absolutely.
100%. Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for coming by tonight, and we look forward to your help on the trail. It's, it's a big issue, and it's, and it's important to us. It means a lot to us. The trail, the connection to Macomb County as well, the blue heron rookery, I mean, these are all really important things.
Thank you. Anytime. Thanks.
Okay, moving on. No other public comment. I think I'm going to start with you, City Manager, because I think you have an introduction you want to make.
I do. So Nick, if you come on up here, so this is the first public appearance onto our viewing, our millions that are viewing, folks, tonight to meet our new DPW director, Nick Schaefer. Nick comes to us from Centerline, and before that, a storied career in Frazier. When I got to meet Nick, Nick actually came and worked part-time for us as an electro-inspector. He's a registered electrician, headed his own company, took a hiatus from government for a little bit, and we were lucky enough to grab him when we lost our electro-inspector. So he was here for a couple of years with us, and got to know the community, so they didn't scare him away, so that was good. So when the time came, we thought of Nick, reach out to him to see, with his best experience in public works, having worked his way from, like I did, from the bottom all the way up to the top in government, and a great fit. He's been here, just, this is the second week to begin, guys love him. He's got the right demeanor, especially when I told him that every time somebody calls, when the trash isn't picked up, or the streets aren't plowed, they get his cell phone. So now, I'm very happy about that. So...
So he'll be busy.
So he'll be busy, yeah. So no, we're excited as heck. We're just filling out this management team, and he, everybody's so excited that he applied, and then we interviewed three people, and Nick rose way above, so we're so happy to have him on board, and he'll, he hit the ground running. He's already been at, with MDOT, and he has experience with AEW and DLZ, which helps also, so there's a seamless interaction with that as the projects go. And so, lot on his plate, but he's been handling it great. I, I know this, and he doesn't even know I know it, but if he saw Kerry Martin driving into Plowton, hey, let me jump in, going around and see what she does all day. And he's been doing that with all the different employees, because he knows, he's done that. So that's the best way we can have. Someone gave him the best compliment that I've heard already, and again, he doesn't know this, but people loved Bill Boland. Bill Boland was an outstanding man when he was here, and they said, he's, he's like Bill. And that was all you could ask for. Bill just had that it about him. And at the beginning of his career, he ended up not so great for them, but Bill moved on and has done great things elsewhere. But while Bill was here, I'm up to the, and he was great. So people are excited for that background. He can relate to the, the workers, and he understands the community. So welcome, Nick, if you want to say hi.
Yeah, thank you. And thank you, everybody, for having me. I'm excited and ready to get going, so.
Thank you. And so to be clear, you spell your name N-I-C-K?
Correct.
And this is N-I-K?
Yeah.
All right, okay. That's our, maybe our only hope, to keep the Knicks straight, right?
Yeah. Important Nick, not so.
Yeah. Well, we are, we are grateful you're here and look forward to working with you.
Excellent. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's all I have.
All right, City Clerk?
Nothing more this evening.
Nothing else? City Attorney?
Nothing, thank you.
Counselor King?
Just wanted to thank the City Clerk for being so proactive and giving all of us this information. It's really helpful, and I know you'll be a great resource, so thank you.
Mayor Protem Bixson?
Yeah, I'd just like to thank everybody for our robust budget meeting on Saturday. I think a lot of information was presented, and I believe that unlike Washington, potentially, I think we will, we are willing to compromise and work together, and we will come up with a good budget.
I agree.
That's it.
I agree. Thank you. Counselor Sage?
Nothing this evening.
Counselor Jones?
Yes, I just want to thank the chief, the fire chief, and all the fire employees for how they support us for Raya, for our pancake breakfast, as well as our spaghetti dinners. They are hugely helpful, and it's a great way for us to get our name out in the community. It's a fun morning, and they seem to really enjoy it, too. So thank you. And then also just thank you both to the chief and all the others for all the work they do on grants. I mean, we are a blessed municipality for how much time is spent, Nick and everyone, and all the departments, and Anthony, and so thank you for all of that work done to get grants. Very much appreciated.
Thank you. Counselor Hauser?
Sure, just very briefly, for those watching, this is the third meeting in five days. That's City Council, that's it. So last Thursday, we had the joint meeting with Planning Commission, City Council, and that was incredibly productive, and we continue to have discussions about finalizing our zoning districts. So I want to thank Nick and the city planners for, for really running a good meeting, because it could have gone one or two ways, and it went very, very well, and I think a lot was accomplished. And then, following up on what Mayor Protem said about Saturday, thank you for everyone at the city. I know Anthony Duckdell, but, but the information that was presented to us is really detailed and comprehensive, and allows all of us, who I believe, as I mentioned, are stewards of the city's money and the taxpayers' money, to really make some, some right decisions and some tough decisions. But without that information, it would make an already hard job even much more difficult. So thank you for everyone at the city. And Leanne, also thanks for the petitions. Can't wait. All right, thanks. That's all I've got.
Thank you. Thank you. Well, Mayor Protem and Counselor Hauser, you pretty much said everything I was going to say regarding the budget workshop and the, the joint session. I was very happy with that joint session. We've got all 10 districts moving for a public hearing, so we're moving that, as well as a work plan of some other items that we're going to be working on, some other things that I know all of council has been wanting to get to. So I'm, I'm happy, really happy with that, also happy with the discussion that we had at the budget workshop. You know, we disagreed on things, we asked questions, we saw different opinions, and yet we all worked well together, got information. And as City Manager likes to say, I'm looking forward to a 7-0 budget, but we've, we've got some work between here and there. And our next really focused budget meeting is February 10th. That's during a regular City Council meeting. And then we also have another Saturday workshop, March 22nd.
We won't need that.
You will not make that?
We won't need that.[1693.01]